What do you lead to the flag in the United States of America? To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, thank you for this day and thank you for our many blessings and watch over and guide us as we do the business of the city for what we can do. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Jim?
Hello? I approve all of the agenda. This is the approved agenda for December 14, 2020.
Motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
All favor.
Aye.
I also am in favor. Jim, they left this for you.
Item D, citizens' comments, and at this point we would allow citizens to comment. They will get allowed three minutes. This gentleman over here actually represents Hinkle Law. He's here for the agenda item F1, so no one citizen should be pressured. They want to see him.
See you soon.
Approve all the minutes. This is approved the regular meeting minutes from November 9, 2020, the Baptist district zoning. And that's one of the things that was on the minutes.
I'll make a motion. May I approve the minutes?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And you also?
Item F, this is board of zoning appeals. This is item F1 for the lot split for the afternoon. On October 23, 2020, Mr. Christopher Ariano of Hinkle Law firm informed the city that financing coordinates set by the bank for the hotel require a new tax ID be generated for the hotel. This requires the hotel be separated via a lot split to generate the new tax ID, which is a parcel identification number or PIN. Mr. Ariano represents the developer, Mr. Rodney Stevens, who has built in Genesis facility, the baseball diamond, and Hampton Inn, which is all collectively referred to as the Goddard-Starbonne district. The lot split will result either in variance or conditional use permit being needed to accommodate the necessary parking required for the hotel. Right now, under general analysis, no lot split shall be approved if and then the conditions that follow. All this is in your agenda packet. In green, I have listed the requirements. No street or alley is required or proposed. No vacation is necessary. No significant increases in services. No reduction in the right-of-way. The easels will not be changed. Lot will have access to the streets through the parking, not substandard lots, so this is 55,000 is being proposed, required for this zoning district is 7,000. Lot width is 176, required is 70. Lot depth is 450, required is 100. Such action will not result in lot being split due to more than two tracks of industrial. Now, it's only two tracks, so it's just going to be split. And the planning commission board of zoning appeals may make such additional requirements as deemed necessary to carry out the intent and purpose of existing land development regulations governing policy. If approved and all other conditions have been met, the head of the planning commission, being the chair, shall sign and furnish a certificate of approval, which is probably now, Mr. Chair. Two, affixed to the lot split survey, a certified copy of the error shall be filed with the registered deeds and the official designated to issue building, occupancy permits, and office equipment, et cetera. Financially speaking, there is none. We don't need to publish lot splits in the city newspaper or have any prior notice, and legally it's approved as the form. It is a recommendation that the planning commission approve the lot split for the parcel identified as 30005148. At this point, I would invite Mr. Nick to come up, of Hinkle Law, and he can answer any questions he has.
Gentlemen, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And ask any questions you may have about the project or the specific reason for the split. Being required by the bank who's financing the building of the hotel, so that's the reason for the split.
So this is just a liability issue with the bank so that they can get their piece of it? Is that the way I understand this?
Yes, and also to make sure that there was concern about having the, there be a separate tax ID number for the actual lot so they can keep track of any sort of taxes that may eventually be required on that property. And so they want to make sure that they're continuing to be in first place from any sort of accounting leans, city leans, so that's the reason for the split.
Okay. Questions?
Comments? I'd already asked one before, just if we split the lot, is there going to be enough parking for both or is there going to be grandfathered in if it is sold down the road?
Right, so parking is an interesting question, and that's something that we've been talking about a little bit at Hinkle Law. And that's, the way our subdivisions read right now is you would either need to do a variance, which would basically change the bulk regulations for parking as necessary for that, or you would need to do a conditional use permit to approve for off-lot parking, basically, to accommodate the necessary requirements. A variance doesn't seem, I was looking at how many parking would actually be on the lot. There's only probably going to be about maybe 30 to 40. That's a rough estimate. Which the requirement, I think, is about 150. So a variance to reduce it from 150 to 50, I don't think is very reasonable, but I mean, that would be at the discretion of the planning commission. At, a conditional use permit allows for off-lot parking as long as it's within a certain feet distance from the actual lot itself. I think it's about 200 to 400 feet. So you could, right now, there's plenty of parking. There's about 1,000 parking spaces all around the facility, so there's plenty of parking for that. The only concern, of course, would be that a conditional use permit stays with the land. So if there was, you know, subject to the Genesis being sold to a private party 10 years down the road, and they were parking on the Genesis, if the Genesis at some point would contest that parking, you know, or if the hotel was going to try to contest it as well. That would be one of the concerns, but I don't, I don't see that as being something, you know, as Nick and I actually was talking about. Usually that's conveyed, the conditional use is conveyed with the sale of a property that, hey, there's a conditional use with this property that you must accommodate the necessary parking for the hotel. So if the Genesis was sold to another gym, I don't know, it would be, you know, 24-hour fitness, let's say 24-hour fitness bought it, they would be obligated to accommodate the hotel because that conditional use isn't standing. It's a legal document, so. And I believe Genesis, as Nick was saying before, that this would actually be something they would have to convey. They would have to be, hey, we do have a conditional use permit. You have to accommodate us, you know. 24-hour fitness would say, well, that's a deal breaker. That'd be up to them, you know.
It would be, what I was explaining to Mike is that it would be disclosed as part of the sale process if it ever came down to it. And that use permit would come up, any sort of due diligence that the buyers would come up. So it would be, and it would be a legal question between buyer and seller, not necessarily involved with the city, wouldn't count in any way.
Is there any concern there that the property then wouldn't sell? I mean, I know we're going to probably beat this to death, but.
I mean.
You know, I mean, if, if, if in fact the Genesis was to try to sell and that was a deal killer for most people.
I would be more concerned if the inverse.
That's true, too.
If Genesis was asking for a conditional use to accommodate more parking on the hotel, that could be a deal breaker for the hotel, I would think in my mind. Not necessarily, I mean, still, it depends on all the revenue that they're generating. I don't anticipate the Starbond. I mean, we've had really good numbers for the Genesis, for those baseball diamonds, really, really good numbers.
Right.
Upwards of 30,000 tickets were sold last year. There's only 150 rooms, I believe, or 135 rooms in the hotels. I mean, it's going to be a max occupancy pretty much year-round. I don't see, with those good numbers, I don't see the hotels ever being financially, the numbers would never say in a pro forma that it was cost prohibitive at that point because of the parking. But yeah, if the inverse was true, it might be a little bit different situation, but I don't see 24-hour fitness saying, oh, we need to give you 100 parking spaces. We have 1,000, and so now we're strapped, you know what I mean, so.
Yeah, I think that once it's in place, as long as it doesn't, and I can't imagine why it would ever sunset, but if, as long as it doesn't sunset, I think it will have minimal impact, at least from my perspective, on any sort of ability to convey either the baseball diamonds or the hotel in the future. Any other question?
No.
Nothing?
No.
Well, I thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the lot split for partial identified as 30005148.
I'll second.
All favor.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you, Nick, if you want to say anything, maybe you can, or.
I save my clients some money.
Thank you very much. Item G, old business. There is none. Item H, new business. So this is a review, but the planning commission has issued several conditional use permits, CUP, to allow for increased allowable square footage of detached garages on residential lots. Noticing the increase in trends towards larger detached garages and wanting to avoid the issuance of multiple CUPs over the course of the year, the planning commission requests a possible revision of the subdivision regulations as needed to correct this. The revised regulations, if accepted, would have to then be approved by the governing body and finally published in the city newspaper. The revised regulations would take effect 30 days after publication, so it has to be published twice, has to be published prior to this meeting, and then published again once the governing body approves it, if they want to approve it. The current regulations are found in Article 6, 100. B. 1. The current regulations state that the detached garages cannot exceed 720 square feet unless approved as a conditional use permit by the planning commission. The revision increases allowable square footage to 1,440 square feet. No other revisions are made to this article or section. Kind of economic underpinnings of it, we talked about a little bit, I spoke with Jeff Mannion. He's a central county residential lane analyst. Allowance for detached garages may increase the property value if it is found that detached garages make the property more desirable. It is also adds the extra benefit of allowing people to store their boats, RVs, et cetera, out of the driveway and city driveway, which is a common occurrence. It seems right before the cold, cold weather sits in, we constantly are driving around telling people to move their pontoon boats, move their RVs. You're allowed to have it for about 48 hours on the city streets, but after that, I'm calling and then the police have to go tag it, so that's just another extra benefit. Financially, it's a small fee associated publication, both pre-planning mission and post-governing body. Legally, it's approved as the form, and it is recommendation that planning commission approve the revision of the subdivision regulations for allowable square feet for detached garages on residential lots. At this point, any questions and comments?
I think we pretty well beat this to death last time. Well, good. And, and I guess my only comment is, 1,440 square feet big enough for a pontoon boat or a RV.
Two-car garage, isn't it?
Pardon?
Yeah. I mean.
Yeah.
It's at least a two-car garage.
Oh, yeah.
It's almost a third, well, no, it's probably, it could be four-car, you're right.
It could be four.
Yeah.
Could be.
Yeah, plenty big.
Yeah, and, you know, my point was, we need to make this bigger, but then sort of have some restrictions on. Because it's finding that magic number and maybe 1,440 is it, to where you can get them as big as we could so we don't have to see everything, you know, approve everything.
Right.
Not get them to where they're, you know, 40 foot in the air. Did you find out the zoning?
Yes.
The height?
For accessory units, for accessory units on residential lots, it has to, it can't be taller than the principal building.
The what?
The principal building. It can't be taller, accessory cannot be taller than the principal, only on residential lots.
Okay.
And I think the reasoning behind that is that typically you're not going to need something that's 40 feet on an accessory on a residential lot. Or commercially speaking, you might, for example, you might have an office that's only 14 feet in height, but your RV storage, then you need all these 20-foot RV storage accessory units. And that's why it doesn't particularly apply to commercial or industrial, but it applies to residential, so.
And I think most people would expect it to be the same as the main.
More or less.
Yeah, that or less. So then the red flag is when they get above that.
Yeah, that'd be on residential. So if we wanted to, for example, the planning commission wanted to put an adoption on, I don't know, 20 feet, most residential, I think, is 25. I don't know if anybody wants to comment on that, but I think most of the height for residential I've seen is something over 20, 21, 22, 25 on occasion. It just kind of depends on how big the houses.
25 seems right.
Yeah, so you're talking about 25-foot accessories would be the maximum height they could have, which is still pretty big.
Do we need to write that into this?
But again, that's, that's not, I mean, if you figure 10-foot walls and dresses.
You have 12 feet there, side walls.
Yeah, that's not, that's not unreasonable.
Oh, no.
I guess I would ask, but you know, like with mine, mine has a view out, so the backyard, obviously, from the backyard to the roof is.
It'd be the curb, what you are, curb line, I think.
Yeah, that's right. And when it's building permits submitted, it's, they usually include the height.
See, again, that would be mine. Mine would push 30 from the curb.
So that'd be a question if we would.
Well, I guess it would depend, front, front side, you know, where you, but they, you know, mine was raised up some for the view out, which would, you know, my, I think my chimney chase is 32.
Yeah.
Which is two or three feet above my roof line, so I'm just, I don't know how that works, but didn't know how that worked, but yeah, so mine would be pushing 30.
Residentially, it's restricted where it can't be above the principles, but if your principle is 30, technically, the accessory could be 30 as well. So if you wanted to have a limit on that, say, nothing above 20, it would kick in effect at that point. We would have to consider that for adoption in January or February, but that would be, at this point, you're only considering maximum square footage allowance, not necessarily height.
Well, if we don't have anything in there that specifies height, then, then there's no restriction on it. Is that correct?
Just for residential. So residential says you can't go above the principal building.
Okay.
Whatever the principal building is. It could be 15, it could be 20, it could be 30, but the accessory can't exceed.
So you could have an accessory building that's 30 feet?
Yes.
I guess that's fine. I'm just.
If you want 20 to be the cutoff, or consider that to be like, anything over 20 would have to be approved by the planning commission. We could adopt that as policy, too. And we would just write it and publish it and allow it to circulate in the city newspaper and then consider it probably in January or February.
So they still have to purchase a permit, and do you still have to see a plan?
Yes, so anything that exceeds, basically, 280 square feet becomes a building permit by default. And then there's the question of, why is it exceeding 280 square feet? What are you going to be using it for? All these questions surface and it becomes, oh, I'm doing this for a garage. And it's usually pretty straightforward. You figure that out pretty fast that they're doing a detached garage. Well, as soon as they, and this kind of came up with the last planning commission, the use can be somewhat valuable, but at the same time, if they say on the phone, this is for a garage, I'm going to be storing cars in it, well, that's a detached garage. Well, that triggers that provision in the subdivision regulations that says it can't be over 720 square feet. So if they say 1,000 square feet, well, that's a conditional use. You've already said, you've already conveyed to me that you're going to be storing cars in it. That's a detached garage, so.
So I guess, I guess what I'm getting at is that if we go forward with this, you're going to see some plans, and if we begin to see, you know, 30-foot garages.
So either way, he's going to see, they're going to come across.
They have to.
Because they're bigger than the little pre-manufactured shit.
Because it needs, because it requires a building permit.
Mm-hmm.
And so we're going to know pretty quick if people are going to, are building excessive, when they're going to address it, I guess.
Yeah, I was just trying to get as big as we could without, you know, getting to the moon. It seemed like 720, we were seeing everybody's, like, like maybe that was just too small. At least needed to be 1,000 so everybody didn't have to come in here and, you know what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm. No, I have no problem with this. Again, like I said last month, I'd like to think people were responsible enough to consider, I'm not going to build a two-story garage, but.
Well, those.
That's not the case.
The ones up in Elk Ridge, when you drive through there now, there's a couple of them that people built for RVs, and you can tell.
Mm-hmm.
Because they just tower over everything in the neighborhood, which they're in a good spot. Like, one's got one, a pool next to it, and it doesn't really interfere with anybody, anybody's views or anything like that, but.
I don't think there's any lots in Elk Ridge that are less than half an acre. I think all the lots are six tenths of an acre or bigger.
There's a couple in St. Andrews that have RV garages.
Detached or attached?
No, attached.
Attached, that's what I'm saying.
Would he have to have clear for?
I bet they're 14 to 25.
Yeah, that's the thing. If you have a big enough lot, you can bypass this by simply saying it's an attached garage. If you're attached, that's not a detached garage, so there is that element, too.
Most residential lots are.
Put a ton of living space.
Yeah. Detached, accessory garage, that magnitude anyways.
That's true.
That's what we're proposing is almost a 30 by 50 that they can build, so you're going to have to have some land to even get remotely close to that.
Do we want to put a height requirement on it, or do we want to just let it ride like it is?
Honestly, don't think we'll need it.
Yeah.
Okay.
If we see it's an issue in the future.
That's what I'm thinking.
Most residential lots, St. Andrews, Seasons.
They are going to accommodate.
They're not going to get anything big enough to have something that tall.
Well, somewhere to accommodate 12.
And we've got it now, so they can't go above the house, the top ridge of the house, or chimney, I guess.
Maybe the ridge of the house, probably.
Your chimney might go up beyond that.
It does, about three foot, you know, just.
Yeah, but it's just a single point, and, yeah, so.
Yeah, I think we're good.
Your motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the revisions to the subdivision regulations for allowable square footage for detached garages on residential lots.
All second.
All favor.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Item I, this is the staff report. So this is going to be for January. We'd be voting on the chair and vice chair, just like we did this year on January 11, 2021. The planning commission will vote on the chair and vice chair position. This is a requirement of the subdivision regulations that perform on an annual basis. Number two, review of the subdivision regulations. So anything that's kind of come up over the past year, we kind of review and can take into consideration any changes we might want to make. This will also include updating the zoning map. It doesn't necessarily need to be adopted immediately. It's more of a review, receive and file, and then move forward at that point. Anything that would actually need to be adopted, we'd have to have a formal agenda item to go, so this would more be just conversational than anything else, to try to get the pulse of what the planning commission wants to see moving forward for the city. So that's would be that as well. Number three, economic review. So we'll do an, excuse me, an economic review of the last year, including permits, poll, growth trends. This will also include the census data release by the U.S. Census Bureau and any other pertinent information to help inform decision-making into the future. So there is quite a lot of data. We've had an exceptional year even with COVID, so this will be a good time for that. At this point, we move on. Item J, it's planning commission comments.
Don't everybody speak at once.
Question on the pole barn that came up on Main Street behind the.
Yeah.
Is there anything that, I mean, since it's behind the building, is that because of that, why they don't have to have any kind of a masonry facade or anything with it?
Yeah, so there is a lot that goes into that one, and I haven't heard anything negative. It's just been general questions. Everyone's been asking about it. They were all hoping it was in addition to the library. It was not, but there's a couple of things in our subdivision regulations that kind of were never triggered because it's considered an accessory structure. So for example, you will notice it's taller than the principal building. Well, it's on the central business district. It's not a residential lot. If it was on a residential lot, it could not exceed the principal building. If it was on a residential lot, it could not exist in the principal building, but since it's the central business district, as we mentioned, commercial, industrial, they have reasons to have an accessory that's taller than a principal, so that's why there's nothing that prohibits that. Number two is that principal buildings are required to have a facade, this is not the principal building, this is an accessory. Number three was that the question of Morton buildings has come up before, and discussion with the city administrator and the governing body and everybody else included, and we haven't come to really a consensus of how to regulate that. I know we've talked about that before, do we want to prohibit Morton buildings? And, you know, we would see the increase in material costs, as it is right now, probably even higher, because then we'd require people to use some other material, brick, stone, or something else, and some people feel that could be cost prohibitive. But there's nothing right now for design guidelines specifically on the central business district, and so that's a conversation that would have to be a continued conversation. If anybody wants to adopt it as formally as code, we can enforce it at that point, but right now, there's nothing that says somebody can't have a Morton building, for example, even as a principal building, it would just have to have a facade on it, et cetera, so that's what's, that makes sense.
Yeah, that's, that answer was, I just was curious, because, I mean, I know it was a pole barn structure, but, but because it was taller than the, than the principal building, I didn't know if it had to be.
Yeah, and accessory structures don't require site plans, in fact, it even says in subdivision regulations that site plans will only be required for principal buildings, and, you know, as I said, I only interpret the subdivision regulations, I don't know, some of the reasoning behind it is pretty obvious, some reasoning I don't necessarily agree with, but that's beside the point. I can't just arbitrarily choose what I want to enforce and not enforce, and so in the subdivision regulations, it says principal buildings will be required to have a site plan, but not accessory buildings. So it does, it doesn't say specifically not accessory buildings, it just says on principal buildings, you'll be required to have a site plan for a commercial, so. That's something, too, we can take into consideration for changing, it's just a matter of, you're talking about adding the architectural costs for submitting a site plan to an accessory.
Well, and, and a lot of what goes on with this is we're talking about Kellogg 54 versus Main Street.
That's right.
Yeah, Main Street's going to be harder to fill in, and maybe a little leniency there is in order.
So what is the use of an accessory, just storage?
Just storage, pretty much.
Equipment storage?
Equipment storage, any other type of storage, boxes, Christmas decorations, filing, anything else that they might need, I mean.
And it could be larger than the principal building?
Yeah, and the thing is that there's not anything that specifically says that the use of the accessory has to be defined in the application for the accessory, and so when they submit them, it's, usually there's a conversation that takes place, at which point you determine if it's going to be storage for, you know, cars or something of that nature, but if they say general storage without automobiles or things of that nature, then it's, it's just general storage. And then it's, there's a determination for height, and, but the central business district, the maximum height regulation is 45 feet, so.
Majority of the principal buildings on the central business district are pretty short.
They are, you know, and that's just a byproduct of time more than anything else. You know, steel manufacturing, everything else that takes into account, building starts getting larger for cheaper, you know, then they come about for a while, but. Things to think about, things that, how much you want to regulate, if you want top design guidelines, you know, and how we can move about. I can informally request, in which I've done with Mr. James Gerega over at Struts, they're going to be building an addition on that lot across the street from us, and I mentioned that somewhat informally, hey, you know, the city as a whole generally don't want to see as much corrugated metal, so can we lean in a different direction? So he sent me some images of what he's proposing, but ultimately, if he said corrugated metal for 90% of it, except for the facade, there's nothing that says, you know, I would have to bring it before the planning commission, obviously, at some point, leave it up to you guys to make that determination if you wanted to shoot it down, but there's nothing that really says, I can say no, it's just a matter of how much we want to stretch certain regulations, informally speaking.
But with what he's wanting to build, it will have a masonry or stucco or something?
Yeah, it'll be required on the front, the front would definitely require it, it's just a matter of how much of the back and the sides would be corrugated. There's nothing that says can't. So that's where, if we're trying to avoid that, it would need to be codified, we would need to bring that into the code, have the planning commission approve it, and the governing body approve it, and then have it be officially say, no, you can't do that, at which point his cost for building something different would, I don't know how much, 200%, would increase that much more if he had to use something besides corrugated, and that's just a consideration we'd have to think about. I'm not opposed one way or another, honestly. Design guidelines are very typical nowadays, but they're usually typical in larger cities, 100,000 plus, and so it just kind of depends on what.
Well, and if, and if we stay with what the public is going to see when they drive up in front of it, that, that was probably our intent on the discussions on Kellogg, was that, maybe there are 10 buildings.
Curb appeal.
Yeah, but like the church out here, they did a good job of making it not look like More, less?
I think, what about Brahms, or anything on that?
Yeah, they pulled the building permit, they paid the fees, and we're just, they were supposed to start digging up dirt at some point during this month. I'm not sure if they started yet or not, I haven't seen an excavator.
They started today.
Did they start today?
Silkspan started the other day, I knew that.
I don't know why they needed excavator, I suppose other than trenching, I don't, obviously, I've never worked in construction, I apologize, so.
Well, you and I talked about the lot over on 199, that is finally going to have something positive happen.
Yeah, that was back in March of last year, where the planning commission approved the conditional use for duplex on that. The gentleman pulled the demolition permit, and then the fire department, Wichita SWAT, Goddard PD all used that house for training, and his demolition permit expired, so he had to pull another demolition permit, and so he did that in November of this year, and now he put it to good use by demolishing it, so we should be seeing a building permit pretty soon for that, which would be nice. So the trend is, seems to be consistent that in, you know, west of Goddard Road, north of Santa Fe, south of US 54, and even yesterday, I got a phone call, the gentleman wants to know what's the rezoning process to rezone to a higher density, to turn some of his lots into duplexes, and the trend is just consistent. They're starting to catch up to the idea that the market will accommodate rentals and that people want rentals of quality, not just any type of rentals, and so we're seeing more and more of those, so. I expect 2021 will continue that trend, and 2022 will be no different. Well, we'll probably either rezone a large swath of Goddard, or we'll have every lot we will consider independently, and just pick and choose our paths, I suppose.
As unusual as it seemed to me, today on Facebook, there was somebody looking for a rental in Goddard.
It happens quite often, actually. We get people out the window, I see it on Nextdoor, on apps, and so.
I think commission comments are done.
January 11th will be the next planning commission meeting?
I would like to hear a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.